I'd like to call it the Order of the Ashton County Commission Order, it's June 8th, with the Commissioner on 423 North Street. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to bring up, we have a couple additions that are deletion from our posted budget. Stacy Eaglesworth sent a project from the solid waste. We're going to approve the joint communication budget. It's result of our joint city county meeting, we all went through it and agreed on it. So if there's objection, I would add those to the agenda. Also Donna Oswald probably put off till next week. And so we can kind of move along with that. Any public comment? Okay. Have we had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting?
Yes, I have.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Move about Commissioner Noel, second by Commissioner Quinn. All the papers, the office say. Commissioner comments?
I would like to announce that the NEK shot of, or not a shot of hope, that NEK multi-county health is going to do a shop clinic at the Juneteenth celebration on the 12th from 1:00 to 3:00. So anyone that would, is interested in getting COVID shot, please come up. We'll be at the Elephant Park, I'm not sure exactly where we're going to be stationed, but the Mr. Bratton and others were very excited for the possibility and it worked out, so.
I think it'll be given the one dose.
I'm not for sure on the dose yet. They may be offering two different kinds. I'm not for sure which one, they were talking about doing possibly two different kinds, Johnson Johnson and one of the others. So anyway, that's kind of up to availability and preference of Lori Forti and those asking for the clinic. So that's, I'm, I haven't been aware of, made aware of what that vaccine was.
What?
I just wanted to let the public know there's a community remembrance project. The George Johnson Memorial Walk will happen this Friday, June 11th at 7:00 PM. We will meet at Sixth and Santa Fe and then walk from there with an unveiling of the marker and memorial sculpture at 400 block of Commercial Street. And then I will be helping at Juneteenth as well on Saturday with volunteering. All I have.
I don't have anything today. Doctor, Representative, you're up.
What about the budget? Is that already done? Are I need to go first?
You first.
Okay.
Well, you're, you're second.
Well, that's all right, I'll take whatever I get.
We want to pull him a chair out here.
Sure. Like his right, his spotlight.
He can put it where he wants. Do you need some coffee?
No. All right. I think I'll just stand, that's okay. I appreciate this opportunity to appear for you today and discuss with you a simple request that I'd like to see us have the County Commission embrace the concept of what's called a rural opportunities zone or what we refer to as RAS in the state of Kansas in the legislature. This must be done via resolution by 6:30, 21 to receive this designation for the balance of this year and again by 12:31, 21 for the calendar year 2022. So some of you may know what a RAS is, but I'm going to take you to a brief explanation just sort of, so we're all on the same page, all on the same track. A RAS is a designation by a rural county now defined by a population of less than 40,000 individuals to attract new qualified skilled employees and professionals with student loan debt to Ashland County. This is accomplished via two ways. First, direct student loan repayment assistance with a 50/50 match of local effort, matching state grant up to $3,000 per year and up to five years for each recipient or $15,000 total. So it's a significant tool. This part is administered by the Kansas Department of Commerce. And then the second part is 100% estate income tax forgiveness or rebate for those individuals that locate from out of state. And again, this is for up to five years. So if you're an out-of-state resident, you're recruited, for example, to come to Ashland County in whatever capacity, you can get significant help. And those are the two basic components of the rural opportunities zone. Historically, this concept of RAS was enacted in the 2012 legislature by Sam Brownback's administration and it's been enforced ever since. I have attempted many times to get us a RAS designation since I've been your state representative and I've been shut down for reasons of, we're not rural enough, we don't have enough state funds and then of course the pandemic. So that's my reasons and I'm sticking to them, why we haven't gotten a RAS designation. Seventy-seven counties in the state are designated as RAS counties. There are now 18 more that are able to do that and we would be one of those 18 counties. This last year, I'll tell you, the 17 counties participated in RAS. One of them right north of us in Donovan County, they participated in RAS this past year. Think they had three recipients. In the past, this had to be done via state legislation, you had to be designated to RAS County by state legislature. But this past year, a group of like-minded legislators, of which I was one, got together and we passed a new law that circumvents this and it puts it on a county-by-county basis so that the county has the opportunity through resolution have themselves designated as a RAS County, hence the reason for my visit today. So we must have a population of less than 40,000, I think that we make that easily. And this is codified again, it was just passed in Senate Bill 47 and was signed by the governor on May 17th. So this is law, this isn't going to be law, it is law. It became law basically about three and a half weeks ago. And really that's my ask today, I'm requesting that the Ashton County Commission endorse and draft a resolution of support for our designation as a RAS or rural opportunities zone before June 30th of 2021. And you have to redraft it again, I believe, before 12:31, 21 for the 2022 calendar year. Again, and this is the important part, and I would be asking this question. It has a zero dollar impact, zero dollar impact to the County Commission. Now because it's county by county, some counties choose to do the state match. You know, they choose to do the $1,500. But many counties utilize the businesses that want these employees. And I'll give you two examples, I've done some research and I know Amberwell Health are at good old Ashland Hospital and Benedictine College have told me that if they want to recruit someone, they would be happy to participate in this and do the $1,500 match. Okay? So that has zero dollar impact to you and how you move forward on the resolution drafting. But this commitment of a RAS resolution has to come from the County Commission, the way Senate Bill 47 is drafted. Of course, we'd like to have an in-house supportive. I've included a template for you to review, I've talked to the Kansas Department of Commerce and they told me that in the line, it's on, I think it's in section five. Section seven, you should leave that as a zero dollar a year for the purpose of matching payments because you're not going to pay anything, you're going to be a conduit of that from these businesses and industries now. So how do people qualify? These are basically folks after high school would have either a two-year or four-year degree out of college, that are skilled labor or they're professionals, for example, a physician or a maybe a specialized physicist at the, at the college or something such as that. That is a lot of school debt and they would be criteria for this and so those individuals could go through the RAS program and that entity would, would provide the money, the matching grant, the state would then match that in the amount of $3,000 a year. Now in a lot of cases, that's not going to pay for all, you know, your educational costs, but it'll pay a good chunk of it. And it's certainly an opportunity that I, I think it's a tool that we ought to utilize going forward for our county. And it could help USD 377, it could help 409 if we wanted to get certain types of employees and administration in either one of those districts. I think it could help those industries and businesses in our industrial park out here, I was gesturing, in the industrial park out here, yes, that could work, it would become an industrial park. And then I think it could also be utilized for Benedictine College, Amberwell Health, maybe some other businesses that want to acquire skilled or professional employees. And so I'm here at, at my behalf as an individual, as one taxpayer for you, requesting as your state representative that you give this serious consideration and try to get that resolution drafted on a timely basis. If you have questions, I can put your clerk in contact with the Kansas Department of Corrections with Rachel or David Soper who could help, you know, get this drafted. This is just a template that I've given you to kind of be aware of how it might look going forward. So I'm happy to try to answer questions, I hope I answered some of them in my presentation.
That would be the same template it was on the Department of Commerce.
So is it, okay, that's what they sent to me.
So we have one if you want to adopt. So we want to adopt this one here, I mean, what, 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 next week for a resolution? Can we produce one today? Yeah. Do we have a resolution number?
If you want to wait a week, it's okay, I understand, but I want to make sure I, I got the concept to you as soon as I could.
I think we can do it today, if we have to wait to sign it.
We've talked briefly the past two weeks about it, but thank you for coming because you answered questions for all three of us together that we had and the public has. So I appreciate it, you definitely have, have my support, I think it's a great tool and the more young professionals and any professionals we can attract to come to Ashland County is a win for all of our businesses and.
Well, we're actually at a bit of a handicap because we haven't been a RAS zone for, you know, stranding counties and basically every county around us, Leavenworth is not because they're too great a population, but you know, brand on, they're all RAS counties. And so it puts us a little bit of a disadvantage and this will level the playing field and, and this allows me to avoid trying to go through the legislature. It puts a burden on you all to help us get this to happen, so.
Question? Can somebody be eligible for both one and two, be from out of state and get the student loan?
Yes, let me explain that. Out-of-state recipients actually have a little bit of advantage over in-state recipients. Only out-of-state recipients are eligible for the income tax rebates. In-state residents are not. They only get the student loan help, you know, the matching grant help. But if you're from out of state, you can get both, you get both components of, you know, one and two in this program.
It's pretty, I've studied it quite a bit, it's cool deal.
Well, it's a, it's, it's a great opportunity where you guys can take the high ground and it doesn't impact your budget at all and does help with recruitment of, of certain types of specialized employees and professionals to our community and into the area, to the county. We hope you'll, you'll give it favorable consideration, I appreciate your time today.
And we're going to probably act faster than the legislature.
No offense, Jack, that's not saying much.
So what's the resolution number, Keala?
1481.
1482.
1482.
And you guys are going to print, copy?
I have a question for you, just as our legislature, we, we applied for a grant on 286 Road, I'm sure you might be aware of it. I feel like I dropped the ball and didn't come talk to you about it, which I should have, we did not, we were not awarded the grant, however, we scored high in the public support portion and some of the other ones. We walked away with some takeaways that maybe we shouldn't have went for the 90, 10, more of the 70, 30 more cost to us. And another thing is just helping get state legislature to stand behind us. So are those things, like certain grants that we're going for, we should be in communication with you?
Yes, only in the, I should write a letter of support to facilitate.
Okay.
And, and, and you see when, on the key for the first strings, and it sounds a little arrogant, but it's true, when you're keeping the first strings, they will pay attention to your, to your letter of, of support and direction when you're able to hold them, you know, accountable for their funding. And it does help, I think, it's helped me, I know in some, in two of the city grant programs, I think that my, my letter of support was important in helping them get the grant they wanted for the Main Street or Commercial Streets being redone right now and also with Star Wars.
Awesome, well, I apologize, we should have came to you and.
Just let me know, give me a little warning. And what I love is when you send me a template letter and then I can kind of modify it a little bit and put my name on it.
Okay.
And that way I can get it done real time. I'm happy to do anything I can to help us get, you know, grant money flowing back to infrastructure or whatever the needs are for our county.
Yeah.
What was the other that we were lacking in, that they were asking for more, is it business or?
Economic development, which?
We got a focus.
Yeah.
We have a story.
Yeah, we, we do.
So I think we've got a story.
Yeah, learning lessons, but I appreciate it, we'll be definitely letting you know about all of them we're going for so that we can.
And I'd like an invitation to come back in July or August when I'll have my summation of the legislative session newsletter done. I can give you a hard copy and I can give you a quick dog and pony show on what we did and what we didn't do and we can continue the communication about how we can help with letter support for whatever the needs are. And the, the more you submit letters, even though you're turned, yes, the more you're in front of them, eventually you're going to win. And it's, don't give up if you're turned down the first time, keep trying and, and I know in particular on bridges and roads, you guys really need as much grant money as you can get.
Right.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2121-1482 on the 8th of June 2021 for the rural opportunities zone student loan repayment program, calendar year 2020. Seconded by Commissioner Noel, any further discussion? All the papers, the office saying aye. Aye. Passes.
Thank you.
Three to zero. We did move that. We don't have to go to the government.
There's a lot of things to be, that's great. That's why, that's why we did it this way, because I knew I could get done with your, your system, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the time, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. 25, Medical Service Director.
Afternoon, everyone, I've got a purchase order, the purchase of one light pack 15 heart monitors, vibrator and associated accessories. This will be purchased through our capital outlay ambulance fund, donations from the Firehouse Subs Foundation, they are paying 100% of the cost at $35,704.16.
No cost of protection.
Absolutely no cost of protection.
The Chair would pay the motion for a purchase order to ambulance, sorry, to Striker Medical in the amount of $35,704.16. So move, move by Commissioner Noel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn, cut, discussion.
I just want to give a shout out to Captain Robert Breyer. He is a big part of why we received this grant, he's a very good grant writer and Corey passed that along to us and we just want to make sure and give him a shout out because that's fantastic. Now we can look at another heart monitor but only pay for one, so that's good news, very, very much appreciated.
Yes, and a big shout out to Firehouse Subs for providing the money for the grant, so give them as much kudos and business as you can.
Any more discussion? All the papers, the office said aye. I pass this three to zero. Okay, Deborah Geiger, you're on stage.
Yay.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So I wanted to come there and do a couple of things to work out and let you know what we got accomplished during COVID, which was a lot, I was, I thought, most of package of my annual report. So if you have any questions about anything that, that we've done, the Art Association has really been very progressive in the last couple of years and we are growing. Beautiful benches launched over the winter and we put the first one together and that's the first one that you see. And we placed it down by the Moreland James Bank, so it's out right now. And we are working with some other organizations within the community and there'll be more and they'll just keep trickling in. Right now we're working with Ashland United and also Project Ashland. And we have a couple of businesses and individuals who are interested in doing some artwork and getting some of their artwork out into our community, so I'm super excited about the response we've had so far from Beautiful Bitches. I wanted to clarify, he said, I'm not sure if he said that we were unveiling the, the sculpture and the plaque this weekend, it's actually next weekend.
Oh, sorry.
We're just.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, we're just doing the walk this weekend.
Okay.
There at Ashland United on Juneteenth and, Juneteenth for some reason is one week earlier this year, but we will be dedicating a sculpture down in the 400 block and we have some plans to turn the 400 block into a pedestrian historical sculptural plaza where we're working on a few things that'll make it more inviting for our community and a place to put Amelia Earhart because she was removed from the 500 block and we've got some other pieces that were removed that are art for Ashland, so we're going to pull them down into the 400 block in the next year or so. So that dedication is next weekend, June 19th at 7 o'clock, if you guys want to come down, we'd love to have you. For this next year, we are looking at our bridge concept. In 2012, KDOTS gave us pieces of the Amelia Earhart Bridge and on this side, these are the actual pieces and they are in storage right now and they have been. We've attempted several times to, you know, put a piece together and an idea together and it's just really hasn't come to fruition. Art has its own way of letting you know you're on the right track or not. So this piece has really gained a lot of momentum, we now have a concept. We are talking to Bracken and possibly placing it right on that corner as you come over the new Amelia Earhart Bridge. So I just kind of wanted to make you aware of, this is kind of the direction that we're heading. At this point, we have our concept, we are, we have to get an engineer because we're going to have a balancing act going on with this particular kind of sculpture. And so our next step is to get an engineer, which we're short of those in this town, by the way. That may be something we can do with that little thing that Emily had.
We have an engineer in college.
I know, I know, John Bishop today said, hey, Deborah, we should take it up. And I forget how fast they're growing and what they're adding in, so.
They're, they're, it's an impressive deal.
Yeah, so I think John, John took this up there actually today to, to see who he could talk to up there. So I wanted to give you an update of what we've been doing, a chance to look at the organization through our annual report that I sent you, if you have any questions. And then just to be here to answer any questions that you might have.
What you were requesting?
We're requesting 2,000.
And that's for this structure?
Yeah, so.
How much of the percentage? They can't pay for the structure.
Oh, God, no.
So what is the total cost?
So what we are right now is we are paying for any engineering calls that we need and art, and on our artists right now. And I'm hoping, I don't know, we're hoping that Bracken wants to partner with us in a really big way and become a substantial partner in maybe even helping us manufacture, although they don't know that yet. So that's kind of where we're heading.
Anything else?
No, do you guys have any questions?
Are there any other organizations in Ashland County that do with the Art Association?
No, we are the only, as far as I know, there are little art groups, but there are no organizations that their sole purpose is to improve, strengthen the community, make art important, promote it, go out in the community, education wise, we educate non-traditional students, so students who maybe don't fit the, into a normal classroom situation, homeschool students, we get those kinds of art students and we run September through May, just like a normal school year and provide a curriculum for that. So to my knowledge, there's no, there's not one in northeast Kansas. We're the only ones up here because everything's so whole.
Yeah.
And we have the benefit of, you know, the mushnecks are so gracious to offer their house to us, so that helps us that we don't have to use our money that we collect to pay the utilities.
Right.
Right, so we are super fortunate and Ashland is super fortunate to have that.
Okay. Are there any other ways outside of the funding that the county commissioners can help support you and your organization?
Um, actually, I've got a question I wanted to ask you guys. Is that if you guys have ideas within the larger county where you would like to have a beautiful bench, like let me know, because we want that to be larger than just this Ashland community.
I feel like the fairgrounds in Effing here would be a great place to even display one during the fair, like to show.
The Blue Building was an idea that someone had and then there was another place in Effing here, but I'm not super familiar with all of the little parts of the county and I know that you guys are, so if there are places that adding a little vibrancy in would be beneficial, it just makes you feel better about your community when you have art showing up and some vibrancy in it.
And what was the price of the bench, like for bench, for sponsoring or?
Yeah, so the benches are about $900 and we're working on a couple of programs, we've gotten some, some foundations to help us pay for the bench itself. The tile is the biggie.
Okay.
So the tile runs about $500 to $600 per bench. And that's really what we're asking right now, people to fundraise for. So if you're an organization, we're going to, we're trying as Art Association to go out and get grants and talk to some people to have a little nest egg for actually purchasing the bench itself, so it's more affordable.
Just a comment of the observations, when I travel, whether I be in a little town or a big city, I notice the art. And it's incredible. The thing is, I've tried to train myself, because as, as local citizens, we drive by things.
Right.
You know, you like the tiled up, the farmer's market and stuff like that, it's incredible. And I think it makes our community a lot better and people from out of town notice it and a lot of times we just drive by it.
I know.
You know, and it's just human, but you know, you go to another town, you say, whoa, they got a full fence.
So we were working, we're working on this bridge piece, we're working with a company in Kansas City called the Zainer Company and they actually have Ashland ties. The Brubin family, I'm sure some of you know them, anyway, Meg Brubin is actually a Zainer and they are manufacturers and, and we really want to like, I don't know, develop a good friendship with them because things are changing and we want to keep ties together, especially when it comes to the arts or anything like that. And he came into the town, it's the first time he'd ever been here and he drove by the farmer's market, we were all in the same truck and he's like, what is that? How, wow. You know, and I'm like, well, we started putting art in this community in 2014 and we just haven't stopped. And so you're right, he, that's one of the first things that he noticed in our community.
Well, the year was, I saw John Bishop down there, other people doing the tiles, the thing is, this is done by, these are people, these are citizens.
Exactly.
You know, it's not, it's delivered here from New York City.
Exactly, it is homegrown, yeah, yeah. And that's how you get people to take pride in their community, is you get them involved and you get them, really if you just make their dreams come true, it pays you back a thousand times because they have such pride in the community.
Absolutely, and I know we've been involved with other projects like the poster contest for the soil conservation and the, had a coloring contest for the, of the courthouse itself. And how many did we have submitted to that, 60?
I was going to say 83, I don't remember.
I mean, it was a tremendous amount. Like, and then you see that we're people that are participating in this and, you know, it's, it's great to see the beginnings of it in the.
And, you know, it's, it's great to see the beginnings of it in the poster contest and the different years and the progression on up through the years. So I really commend those kind of projects.
Oh, yeah.
Especially when it involves locals. I mean, that's
We give them the opportunity to create because we all are creators. And when you give them that maturity, you really get a community that belongs. Yeah, I'm super glad that you guys had a good turnout on your
Yeah, it was good.
On your coloring page. We had a great time making that for you guys. We thought, I thought Morna needs to make a whole entire countywide coloring book, you know, that you can give out to little kids.
People.
Yeah, just, and I asked her.
And adults.
And adults, exactly, exactly.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Hey, Stacy, you're up.
I brought up the requisition for approval for proper repairs that we've been talking about for a few months now. There's been a pretty impressive deterioration of that in the last six months. We need to get right on it. The P1 group was the one company that put in a bid. Their bid was for $37,375. We met with them and discussed how it would all go and we're pleased with with their plan for action and just wanted to get that approved today so we can get moving.
My understanding that we started June 24th.
Yes, so we will be closed. The transfer station will have to be closed for the new repairs. So it'll be the 24th and 25th and the 26th, it's transportation be closed. We plan to stay open in Effingham. But that's just for residential, so any commercial business will start getting some, make some phone calls and get some signage out and make people aware of that today.
Well, the more you communicate, the better, but you're going to miss people unfortunately.
Yeah, well, we'll do the best we can. And a lot of people that come out are regular. So if we hang signs, they don't look for those signs. You know, Saturday, we got 100 people that come out every Saturday, you know? So we'll, we'll get those signs up and that gives us a couple of weeks to get everybody notified and we'll do the best we can on that. That does kind of leave them open for Sunday if by chance they're not done Saturday afternoon, there's a chance that they might have to come in and work Sunday, but that won't affect us.
I don't know how much work it would be, but that big sign that the emergency preparedness has or Wes has, maybe like day or two before, that could be on the, on the way out.
Yeah, I could ask them about that.
You know, that would be save people a few miles, even though they might be already in the car loaded up. It's like, well, this people warned before we got there.
Yeah.
So, because it's going to be hard to catch it.
I know, it'll be difficult getting caught back up, but these are repairs that have to be done and we just don't have any option on this. The building was built in 93 and, you know, we kind of have been fixing it as we could, but it's time for a complete renewal of that shoot, so.
So it'll be closed all day, 24th, 25th and 26th?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll make sure to get that on social media too. That way we can try to capture as many people.
So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase order for $37,375 to the PI group of St. Joseph, Missouri.
P1 group, sorry. I don't know if that matters.
Is it P1?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Moved by Christian Quinn, seconded by Christian Gola. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to, just, I guess on the 24th of May, we had a joint community, joint city counties meeting and we were over the joint communication budget. And by resolution, it needs to be passed by June 15th. So we're going to be passing that today. It'll also be a discussion point in our final budget process. Kim, do you want to say anything about the budget or?
Did anybody have any questions on the budget?
I think you answered all the questions really well at the joint city.
And yeah, I think that the only question that came up at the joint meeting was on the utility bills. And Sheriff Glory provided all of those to Jill Warren. So everything should be good from our end, as far as I understand.
That's correct. I did forward everything I received from the sheriff to her. She should have everything.
Perfect.
So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the joint communications budget as presented. So moved by Christian Gola.
Second.
Second by Christian Quinn. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had a vote in regional council, and I think we're going to invite them in to speak to us over the next couple of weeks. So I think we'll pass over that. Now, what about the, I do not have the rural preservation people acceptance form in mind. Okay. So the chair would ask for a motion to approve the rural preservation grant application for the county courthouse, $95, $94, $50. Have a motion.
So moved.
One second. It's been moved by Christian Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Gola. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. That is all I have for the business. I'm just, nothing else. We'll move on to the county council updates. I don't have anything to take away from the update. Executive sessions.
I actually, on county council updates, I don't know if this is the time, but I was going to ask Pat on the tax baitment or the neighborhood revitalization plan that we need to get with the townships and everybody involved. He had brought up a possibility, Pat did, that if a township or any entity would choose not to participate, whether the county portion ought to be up for, and in that same area. I mean, the, the portion that is the county taxes, you know, if that township isn't wanting to, to participate, would that negate the county portion in Benton Township from being rebated or, am I making myself clear or maybe you can explain that better?
Well, the question was, as part of the neighborhood revitalization plan, we designate, we, the county commissioners designate an area over which the the plan applies. And currently, there are two, there are two areas. All of the county except the target zone within the city of Ashes. And then the target zone within the city of Ashes was done a few years ago. It doesn't have to be that way and so, for example, if the city of Lancaster did not participate in the program last time, you could set your the district, the area to not include the city of Lancaster if, for example, the, the city commission of that city doesn't believe that, that it's necessary. And the same could be said for any of the townships within there are three of them are participating and the others are not. Let's see, Benton and Grasshopper are participating. I guess it was just those two. And the other township are not participating. For clarification, Pat, when we pass the neighborhood revitalization, we will be doing this with county taxes throughout the entire county of Ashes, right? No, you, well, yes and no. You'd be doing it for the county taxes only for whatever area of the county you decide.
Right.
And it doesn't have to be the entire, the entire field of the county. Then it would be part of an interlocal agreement, which would have the school boards, for example, offering the same rebate of the incremental increase in taxes due to the project, the added projects approved. And you could have that also with the townships. Currently, there are two townships that are included on that. The other six are not. So we need to create the districts or the size to match whatever area of the county you wanted. When do you see us passing our portion in the neighborhood revitalization? Well, we're trying to gather that from each of the municipalities. We visited with the cities a few months ago, was it? And told them early summer, we kind of need the response from them.
September's coming, so. Well, the reason I was interested in bringing this up now is if we would choose not to include the county portion in non-participating county or townships or cities of the third class. I think we need to know that upfront and let them know that ought to be weighed in their consideration of whether they want to participate themselves. If we're also going, would consider holding back the county portion in that same area. So I don't know if you'd consider that leverage or, you know. That's probably wrong. But I think all information that we can provide them in making their decision needs to be upfront. I'd hate to have them say, well, we're, we're not going to participate under, under the assumption that they knew all the county portion was going to be refunded. And then we turn around and then not refund it to this.
I'd love to see the townships and other communities participate. This is my opinion. I think that'd be good if they did, but if they didn't, I would rather see us also allow the county tax to be involved in any place in the county.
Any and all.
I totally agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to take any chances and can't grow the town.
Well, right, and we're representing every person in the county, even if they're within those cities that aren't participating. We represent them and it's a good program and I want development all throughout the county. So I, I agree with that.
But it'd be nice if they, they would be, they would join the group if they, their portion shows buy-in to the same.
Okay. I, I think that's an agreement. And I just wanted to throw that out there because I don't think we discussed that portion of it before. And we definitely needed to have that discussion on access three before we went. And if I had any or Pat has any more meetings with those entities, I wanted to be us aware of the possibility that that could be passed on if we chose to do, but that's off the table. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, executive sessions.
Haley is on her way. She was having difficulties getting on the Zoom. So she's on her way down now. So I don't know.
I got an email from Becky Berger too, that she's trying to get on our meeting. And it's requiring a meeting passcode. Is it the one on the agenda, the 9663015?
What did you use for passcode?
I, I, I didn't know I did use one, so it's probably on the email that you guys received. The passcode is on the email that you guys received with the link. No, it won't be on that. That is the, that is the meeting ID. That is the meeting number, the passcode.
Becky, have you received that?
She would not have because we didn't, she wasn't on the agenda, so we don't send the email. So the email that you guys received as commissioners for the afternoon meeting would have the passcode on it. It was like
I get a text. I'll try to
687001. Thank you, Jamie.
6870
687001.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody chatting with us?
Yeah, Jamie just said the passcode.
Okay.
It was my fault, so.
I think we should take a break till 5:15. Let everybody get their stuff together, so. I like to call it recess. Sure. Okay, we're back from our recess. Need a five minutes. Do we have any, we have need for an executive session?
Yes, I'll move at the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at 1:50 PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA 75-4319B1. Now, the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of the executive session at 2:20 PM in the commission room, first floor of the courthouse. And those present will be the three commissioners, Haley Chinch, Senior Village, Jamie Madison, HR Director, and Pat Henderson.
Move to the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back in our regular session. We have another executive session today.
Yeah, Connie.
Which this one?
I don't have.
No, yeah. The non-elected personnel.
So Wes is that?
Oh, he told us to tell him when we were
He could check us here.
Let me see.
I don't think he's even on.
No, he said to text him.
How long do you think we'll need?
Well, we never do anything.
I was going to say the same thing. Connie, are you going to come in here? I think Michelle was going to come in.
First calling you, there's Michelle. Come on in.
Wes might still be Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, then we're going to include Wes on this list of people.
Yeah, even though I'm not sure if he's
I'll move at the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at 2:22 PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA 75-4319B1. Now, the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session at 2:52 PM in the commission room, first floor courthouse. And those present will be the three commissioners, Jamie Madison, Jack Lowry, Bonnie Ellerman, Michelle Phillips, and Pat Henderson.
One second.
Sorry, I didn't use all of your titles. I just
Sorry, I didn't use all of your titles. I just. Okay, we're back to regular session. Do I have a motion for the executive session?
How are?
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes? Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at two fifty-two PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four, three, one, nine, B, one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the Board come out of the executive session at seven, three seventeen PM in the commission room.
It's fifteen minutes.
Three, one?
Three, oh, seven.
Three, oh, seven. I can't do math. Three, oh, seven PM in the commission room, first floor courthouse, and those present will be the three commissioners, Jamie Madison, Sheriff Lowery, Connie Ellerman, Michelle Phillips, and Pat Henderson. Wes did not ever get on, did he?
Second.
Okay, we're done with the public comment. Do they want to make a public comment today? Seeing none.
There's a chat.
The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at three, oh, seven PM. We should all second by Christian, all in favor, send the father saying aye. We are.